See what we can do. Okay, well, welcome, everybody. Like to excuse Carrie. She indicated she would not be able to make it. Brian, welcome remotely. Ted, welcome, and Chris, welcome remotely, and Mark. So let's jump right into the public hearing portion of our meeting. So the purpose of the public hearing is to receive public input on proposed changes to the city fee schedule for garbage and recycling, an increase in the utility disconnect reconnect fee, and the adoption of a temporary building permit fee. So do we have anybody here that is part of the public that cares to comment? No comments here? Any comments from our online participants? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public comment portion of the meeting. Move on to the work session. Okay, item number one, computer tech security support. Chris?
All right, let's see if this comes up. Okay, does the quote come up here on the screen from a company called Alakazam?
There it is.
Okay. So a couple, well, as you know, security and IT is getting crazier and crazier, and people are out there in the world are trying to poke holes into everything, whether it's small businesses like the City Woodland Hills or large government organizations. So we came across this company called Alakazam, thought we would give it a shot to at least talk to them about some of our security needs, our IT, and some of the lack of the things that we don't have. He, this company came and did an evaluation of our system and found some things that need to be worked on and fixed, some of them quicker than others, and without going into too much in a public meeting, we do need to get them fixed. So this company, Alakazam, is a local company here out of Linden. We had them, they, they work on a monthly, kind of a retainer contract basis for 12 months. And they give a monthly price, and then for the, that price that they quoted here, which is fourteen hundred and ten a month, includes 10 hours of service per month. Now, I don't think we're going to need 10 hours of service per month once we get everything caught up today on the system. So I'd like to talk to them again in about six, seven months after we get things caught up and talk about lowering that particular rate down. So this is above and beyond, this, this contract will be the fourteen, ten, four, 12 months. It would transcend two budget cycles, but it is something that council would need to look at and approve. We have not gone up to a formal bid. It's not large enough to go up to a formal bid. But I believe we do have some needs that we need to get working right away. I don't believe anybody here in this room or anybody online has any relationship to Alakazam. I don't know any of the, the people in there as far as a family member, brother or sister, anything like that. So this is a completely separate outside company. The other benefit of having a completely separate outside company versus somebody local or somebody internally is it puts another set of eyes on everything. And they don't have a dog in the fight for anything as far as private data or snooping around or accidentally coming across something that's covered under privilege.
Hey, and, and I just want to make clear that this is a company that I use for my business. It's not like I'm getting any referral discounts or anything. The reason I recommended we look at them is because they've been very responsive. I actually found out about them through the guy who installed the cameras for the city. I asked him, because I knew that I had some security needs that I needed to beef up, and I asked him for recommendations, and he gave me these guys. And I've worked with them for a few months, and they've been very responsive and seem to really know their business. So I, I, I think it's a choice. And Chris, did you look at if they do have after-hours support? Is that something?
I apologize. I did not find that out.
And that's okay. I don't see that being much of an issue. But Jody and Chris, they both met with this company separately, and my take was that they felt it was a good fit, too. So? Any comments or questions?
Do, do they use any sort of active monitoring, like Mimecast or anything like that? What's the big one that, that just crashed all the computers across the world?
Yeah, let's hope they don't. Well, that one might be good now. It's probably been fine tuned.
They do have active.
They do?
Spoofing spamming virus. They look, they, they watch the network traffic to start seeing if we start having a lot of packets and data going in and or out, and then isolate that computer that might have that program on it doing the damage.
Okay. I mean, I, I get a lot of, of emails from the mayor asking me to do stuff on the side with, with these funny emails that when he's in meetings and can't call. I got one today, so.
We all did. We were just discussing it before the meeting started. Yeah.
I, I know, but the funny thing is, is I, that's not even a compromise in our system. That's just someone that.
No, no.
Do they send them to you?
Uh, just through you guys.
So do we ask you for help?
Maybe, yeah. I'll, I'll start with mine.
I just know that Mimecast actually filters those, those type of things out, and, and you, you can have a built-in button on Outlook to report phishing and report those kind of things. So I just wondered if they had a, an active service that watch, watches those. Mimecast is the one that my corporation uses. Is one of the ones that they use. They actually have quite a few different things, but
Brian, the other one is crowds. Crowds.
CrowdStrike. CrowdStrike. That was it.
And I, I, I don't know the answer to that. If, if they incorporate that into their overall service.
I do know it's needed in my company, because we handle a lot of sensitive materials and money and documents, and we have to keep beefing everything up. And we just got, we have a super secure way of like sending wire instructions, because that's a thing now, but we just are actually going to another even more secure system because of it. And our IT guys, I mean, we, we have to pay them a monthly fee, and they're, they're in our, they were in our office today. They just come and they'll like sweep our computers every so often and just make sure there's nothing on there. So.
And I just don't think it's something that we can do in-house, kind of in an informal way these days.
Shouldn't anyway.
Yeah.
This isn't something we want to wish we had.
Right?
Yeah. So just being publicly as open as I can be, I worked in the computer industry forty-two years, and if I, if I know any of these people that are in this company, I don't know that now, you know, but I'm with, I'm with the general feeling here that it's a good idea to, to get something like this.
Oh, so you're, you're talking in terms of potential conflicts of interest kind of thing?
And I saw a name of Brewer, and I don't know that person. So anyway, just being open, yeah, right.
Good to know. Okay, well, thanks, Chris. Item two, proposed resolution amending the city fee schedule. Everyone's got that in front of them.
I mean, we don't have a choice. It's a pass-through.
Yeah, I mean, this is the result of hard cost increases. Chris or Jody, do either of you have anything to add to that? It's fairly self-explanatory.
Yeah, I just, I just want to mention on that pricing structure, because the tonnage, and to make this public record, because the tonnage is going up so much that people with second and third cans are, are the ones that are really increasing the costs, and that's why I was recommending second, third plus cans are charged at a higher rate now than firsts.
Just two comments. Darn, I forgot the, one of them was, I, I don't know when a proposed temporary building permit needs to be issued. I don't know, understand the word temporary.
So what this would do is this would grant, while somebody's getting all of their engineering in place, all of, a lot of different variables into the building process, this would grant them the ability to start digging.
Does it weigh the other feet in?
Uh, no, no. This is just, uh, this allows you to proceed a little bit quicker if you're waiting on a few little things, instead of it holding up the entire building process. This would allow you to start to dig only, as far as I'm concerned. Ted, you can correct me there if I'm missing something, but that way, if something still falls through, the only thing that would have to be done is that pit filled in. So it does not grant the ability to pour concrete. It does not grant the ability to do anything beyond excavation.
We don't have to worry about broken lien priority anymore, so.
So as I was leaving my house today, I mentioned this at home, and someone heard me. And I told her, I told my wife about, we talked about doing our own at one point. So maybe there'll come a time where the prices will justify that more to do our own garbage collection.
Yeah, I mean. Oh.
Not the collection, it's the dumping. So we would still get these, well, the collection did go up 5.4%, but the tipping fees and the dumping fees are what's really going up.
Oh, oh, okay.
We'd have those costs.
True, okay. I'd, I'd rather not have more equipment here, but that's just, it's just someday, who knows?
Well, I mean, I, I know that it's been batted around a few times, and, and I, I know there's some barriers to getting into it ourselves. I mean, but it certainly always something that can be looked at. Okay.
Mayor, can I comment? Just, man, let me correct on your, on the building permit. It, it allows a person to go as far as a city allows him to go. It's not restrictive in nature at no cement or no foundation. So it's whatever the city feels comfortable under the circumstances to allow that person to do. And that's in, that's a separate fee beyond the building permit. So he's going to be paying for a temporary permit as well as a building permit when everything is ready to go. So I just wanted to clarify that one thing. There's the really.
So it could be more expensive than what I articulated.
Yes, it could.
And does that $200 get deducted from the total, or is this?
It's a separate fee.
Faster, it costs an additional 200?
Yes.
Perfect.
All right, thank you, Wayne. Okay, unless there's other comments about item two, we'll move on to item three, Public Works and Fire. Ted?
Yeah, so a couple of things. We got the, remind me, Jody, is this the one we have the well under, or is that coming up?
Of the pavement preservation project under and the well.
Yeah, it's both.
Okay, so, so we got the bids in on the well. As we, we put the project out to bid to finish the well house, to get the, the ductal done, the generator hooked up, replace the pump with the, with the newer pump that was bought. I think it's been about 2019, so five years ago, there was a pump that's bought, and it's, it's there sitting in the wellhouse, a larger pump to pump more water. With that, we have to replace a little bit of the piping, upsize some of the piping, and then just get the well all completed and operational. So we put that out to bid. We received, and then as a second part of that, we also included to finish a road, the, the road we have now going to the well, to finish it and pave it. We put that out in two different bid schedules. The, we, we received two bids. And the low bid, initially at the bid opening, the low bid was about 700 something thousand for the well, nine or some, or 256,000, I believe, and some change for the road, total of 900 plus dollars, 900,000 plus dollars. We, we found in going back through their bid, after the bid opening, found a pretty significant error in their bid. So that disqualified them. So we went into the second bidder. His pump, wellhouse cost, bid schedule one was actually lower than the first guy, but his road was higher. So the culmination of the, of the wellhouse was, and the road is just a little over a million dollars with their bid. The wellhouse itself is $676,000 and some change to do just the wellhouse. Given, after we've talked about this and what budget we have in, in our water funding, we felt and, and talking to our engineers that what we would recommend would be to award the completion of the wellhouse only and not the road at this time. I think we can probably get some better pricing on the road by taking a different approach. And so what we would recommend is that, that the, just the wellhouse be awarded at this time for the $676,000. We've talked to the contractor, and we think we'll be able to bring that cost down just a little bit right off the bat, after it's awarded. We've talked to them about some of the electrical items that, that I think will tighten up in on the costs as well as the piping. I think we can reduce the diameter of the piping slightly from what was originally designed, because we're not going to be able to pump quite as much water as, as the pump will do, so we'll, we'll have to turn the pump down a little bit. But, so I think we'll, we'll be able to save a little bit of money. Don't know what that number is yet right now. We have to work with that. If, if the project gets awarded to the contractor, we'd have to sit down and work that out at the time. So that's, that's kind of the, the summation of the wellhouse, and, and I'll, it's, it's a little bit confusing the way it kind of bit it out. So I'm going to pause here for questions. And maybe they've all been answered.
Ted, do you think, if, if we're going to try to go a different route with the road, is it something that, that we think we can get done this year to promote or to, to facilitate getting that wellhouse done?
I would doubt it unless we award the road right now, the contractor. And even, even with the contractors that bid the project, they had the option whether to finish the road this year or not, depending on what they wanted to do to accommodate the wellhouse construction.
I just, I'm a little worried about completion of the project when it, when it comes to snow being an act of God and, and giving them an out for not meeting deadlines.
So I'll, I'll kind of talk what our deadline is, and then maybe some thoughts on that. So I, I don't think if we take a different approach to the road. Now, if we awarded it tonight, the road, that would, there, there would be a chance they could get it done this year. If, if we don't award it right now, we'd have to go back through some procurement process to get someone on board, and that's not going to be able to be completed this year, because we'd have to have it paved by November. And that just, it is not going to happen unless we get started right now on it. So I, I did talk to the contractor about this and said, we can, we can probably award you the wellhouse, but not the road, based on just what we've talked about with their funding. Are you comfortable with that? They were okay with it. We just had, they'd have to just work on trying to keep that cleared as needed. Now, their deadline right now on the wellhouse is December 31st. So depending on what kind of storms we get before then, could impact their access to the well. Now, that's the deadline as it is. They can claim, by contract, they can claim weather delays. If there's snow and they can't work or they can't get access. My ultimate goal is to have this done before April. Just because we want to time this so that we're, because we're going to have to shut down our well now, and it's going to have to be shut down for a couple of weeks. So we're going to be pulling water out of Maple Canyon for a while, while they're replacing this pump and piping. We want to make that as quick as we can, but, I mean, we have to time it so that we're done irrigating this year, but want it done before irrigation starts next year. Now, that's really what we're kind of looking for. Now, they think they can have it done by the end of the year, but once again, if it gets, if it gets, if we get a lot of snow, and that varies year to year. I was building my house, actually, during November and December, I remember, and, and we, we did okay up till the end of December, and then January, we just got dumped on and couldn't work on our house anymore. But so that's, that will be tricky. We just have to work out a way to keep it clear if they need access or if we get big snowstorms or work. But I think with the road, though, this is a subcontractor coming through a contractor. My, my thought is if we went direct, directly to a paving contractor and worked with them directly, we would save a significant amount of money by doing it, over the 320, I think 6,000 is what the cost is with this contractor. I think we could save a lot of money going, working directly. But the, the, the risk there is we, we won't get it done this year doing that.
Yeah, I just, I, oh, go ahead, Mayor.
I, I was just going to say, so if I recall correctly, if, if we were to award the road as part of this project, I mean, was it, am I remembering this right? Where then if they needed to get up there, then the burden of clearing that out would have been more on them than on us, whereas if we don't award that road, then we really are responsible for getting them access? Is that, is that true? Or maybe I dreamed it. There's a lot of poisonous fumes in my house right now. I might have hallucinated it. I really thought that that was said.
I have no idea what you're talking about, Mayor. I don't know where that, no, I'm just kidding. So the discussion we had with them during the pre-bid meeting was that if it was paved, we could probably help snow blow it with our new snow blower and help them keep it clear. If it's not paved, then we're really going to have to work together to figure out how to keep access there for them.
Okay, I was just thinking if that were a significant benefit in trying to sort of escalate that process or, or, you know, hurry it along, but it doesn't sound like it. It sounds like there's still going to be a, a substantial amount of responsibility on our part to get access. So, thank you.
And, and their part. We, we did say they would have to also be involved in, in keeping it clear. You know, we could use our snow blower to, to blow it down so far. If it's not paved, we can't go all the way to the dirt. But we could go down so far, and then they would have to clear it with a skid steer or whatever the rest of the way down. And that's assuming, you know, that they don't get on it and get it done before we get any heavy snow. But it's, it's really, we, we put the, we, we put a little bit of the onus on them at the pre-bid. We gave them the option whether to pave it or not pave it before this November. That was their choice, depending on how they wanted to keep access to the site.
Okay, thank you.
So do you think, do you think you'll be able to, to get to the point to do a drawdown test on the well with the new pump this year?
The, right now, the, yeah, the deadline is December 31st. So we would be doing a, a pump test probably around sometime first of December-ish, when they got a, because when they got the, the new pump in and we got the new pipes in, that would be the hope. I mean, that's the schedule right now.
Okay, I just, that's, that's one of the things that a lot of my thoughts have been, have been teetering on is that drawdown test and see what we're actually going to be able to do for water out of that well for our city, right? You and I've talked quite a bit about that, and so that's, that's one of the things I'm really looking to, to get done so that we can start planning for, for the future.
Yeah. I mean, the, the biggest piece of work they have up there is replacing the pump. They'll have to have a crane up there to do that, like they did when they pulled it last time to replace our motor. The rest of it will be done with utility trucks.
Okay, Ted, just, just an easy question for Ted. That's a lot of money, and I wonder if it would be possible to get a simplified, itemized list of what the job is that has to be done? Oh.
Boy, you don't, um.
Janet just showed me one.
Oh, the bid schedule?
Yeah, that's exactly. She's got exactly what I was curious about.
Okay.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, yeah, I missed it. Thank you. That's, that's all I need.
Yeah, and what was interesting is the bids came relatively close together. So it, it tells me there's probably a decent, you know, that would probably be a pretty good number regardless of how many times we bid it, unless we change the design.
Mayor? Yeah, oh, Ted, or Ted, not Ted, Wayne.
For, for Ted or, or Chris, in the discussions that we've had, I, I don't remember this coming up, and that, that is looking almost $700,000. I assume that's coming out of the water fund to do that. How much does that deplete and leave in balance our water fund? And if that full amount is, is expended on this project?
Chris? You're, you're silent.
Yeah, give me just a second. I will have an exact answer for you and put it up on the screen here. Because I've been throwing out one figure, and it's actually a little bit higher that we have. So give me a second here. Facilities.
Any other questions for Ted while Chris is pulling that up?
I just wondered where the funds were coming from as well.
Yeah.
That was the same question I had.
Okay, well, there's your answer.
So this is our.
This, I know there's a breakdown. Is there a contingency fee in that breakdown that, that has been included?
Not in the bid schedule that gets submitted by the contractors, because they're, they're, they're bidding the project based on the bid schedule, and because it's a competitive bid, they don't put in any contingency fees in there. Now, it's always good, I always plan about an extra 10% that you could be spending of unknowns during the project. Like I said, we're, one of the first things we want to do if the project gets awarded is sit down with the contractor and look at a few ways to save some money right off the bat on the project to hopefully account for some of that, too.
So Ted, is this a GNP, or do we have the challenge of the elections coming up and the craziness of inflation that this price could change by next April if we don't get started?
It, it will. Prices right now on materials, especially when you're talking some of these steel materials and stuff like that, I mean, they're, they're going up pretty, pretty good. I, it would go, it would definitely go up. We're not, you know, it's not going to come down over the next least foreseeable future.
And the oil is worrying me with the asphalt, not in tar and that kind of stuff. But to answer your question, Wayne, it sounded like Janet and others, too. In our bank account at the state, quote, quote, the state, this is the Public Treasurers Investment Fund, where we invest a lot of our monies, the specific account that we've been putting money away for emergency repairs or, or big events like this, we have 1.416 million dollars in there as of right now. And so I think, Mayor, I've been telling you, it's been about 1.3. That was at the end of last year, we've transferred the money over, and so this is the balance that we have right now. So if we take, Ted, if we take that figure, we would drain this by more than half. It'd still leave us roughly 690, 680,000 bucks in there.
And Chris, like you mentioned to me, I mean, and it is an account that we are replenishing, too, not at a really fast rate, but we do have money that's going into it, too. You said this was the accumulation of funds since about 2008? Is that?
Yeah, so it's ebbed and flowed. We took about 350 out a couple of years ago for the down payment that we had to do a match on. I don't know if it was oak, waterline, or maple. So, so this account has ebbed and flowed. We're putting in about 130 to 160,000 dollars a year into this account. And so there is money going back and forth. The challenge that I see now with society and inflation and stuff is we don't jump on things now. It's really going to start costing us more. For example, the Lofer Drive, yeah, the one we're trying to do across by Mick Hill's old house. I mean, that was supposed to be 80, $8,000, and we've gone five years, and now it's going to be 300,000 bucks, 400,000 dollars. So time is money, money is time. Do you guys feel comfortable drawing down our emergency savings to 7, 680,000 dollars? Did you know there was an emergency savings? And did you know I had this much in it? There's just a lot of different.
It's crazy, because like painting and coating is 67,000 dollars.
I wonder.
Electrical improvements is 255,000.
Are these line items for both bids equivalent?
The other bit's higher, so the one you're looking at is a little bit lower.
Well, so if we, you know, it would be almost ideal if we could just go through and pick which ones we wanted from each contractor.
Yeah, check number line, line 19.
Because. That was sweet, but you would have probably the state procurement on us pretty fast.
Well, it just, you know, and obviously, like, for example, Got Dirt Construction, you know, is it 1-1 mobilization there at 75 grand, whereas, you know, number two here is 7 grand.
Well, and I'll just put this really succinctly and quickly. It's illegal to do that, so we couldn't do it.
But, but Ted, I know, I'm just. But, but Ted, I know, I'm just, I'm curious as to the discrepancies, right? Because the next line item, painting and coating from the first is eight and the next one's 67,000. So I'm wondering is?
It's, so sometimes they put their different, different contractors put different things in different line items. So it's not like comparing apples to apples.
Okay, that was my question.
Yeah, some put their permits and, uh, uh, bathrooms they, they have on site and everything's in their mobilization. Some may include their dirt work in mobilization. So it's, it's really hard to say, um, you know, what each contractor has in those line items. And it's really, um, not where we can pick and choose from each contractor, what we want them to do. It, it's either or.
I just.
19, I mean, uh, 19's a good one.
Yeah.
And I'll give you an example, uh, so a new wellhouse right now, and I'll, I'll just kind of, I'm, I'm going to speak just a little bit probably, um, I'll, I'll try and be as, as, as open as I can, just to be succinct about it. The, the wellhouse, we're basically almost rebuilding it inside. We're putting new pumps, new pipes, uh, uh, the electrical has to be redone. We don't have the backup generator hooked up. It's, it's almost like we're, we're, we're kind of building everything but the wellhouse itself, the, the structure. And a new wellhouse right now, the last few I did were over a million dollars. So this is really in the ballpark of, of where it should be for what we're doing. I mean, I know it's an expensive project. There's a lot of work to be done up there still to get this, uh, finished and a, a good, clean product. My concern, I, and I, you know, I appreciate Chris's comments because this project's not going to be cheaper. I know we question the cost right now, but if we try and, 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 you know, wait another year and then see if we can do it, it's only going to be more money. Um, but.
This is a higher. This whole project's a product of waiting.
The, the, me, the, the bigger issue right now is the risk we have. We've, we, we've got a huge risk of that well. Um, and, and it, that's what keeps me up at nights. Um, I don't get warnings like I should up there. Um, we don't have backup power. When that well goes down, it's down and I may not know it. And if I'm, you know, out of town, we don't get a warning, we could run the tank dry and won't know until people call us. I mean, I'm, I'm really not trying to scare, but it's really kind of where it's at. I mean, it's, right now, that's my biggest concern is the risk we're wearing, we're, we're bearing.
And again, this is in kind of the same vein as the I T. This is not an area, I mean, I know historically as a city, we've tried to, you know, cobble together solutions the best we can, but I think that that's actually ended up costing us money. And so I think that this is a decisive, take this across the finish line and I think it's the way we need to go.
I agree.
So Ted, once again, you're asking for money and you're not even here.
Yeah, I, I, well, what, you remember what I kept saying last, uh, what was it? When I first came on for the first four or five months and, and we kept getting reports that we weren't spending money and I said, just wait. Um, yeah, now the waiting's over. Um, yeah. It's time to, 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 to get some work done. My, I was telling one of my uh, constituents here at this conference I'm at today, you know, the only, the only one who wins when you keep money in the bank is the bank. And when, when we've got some of the vulnerabilities we have right now, um, it, and obviously it's, it's the council's decision. You guys are the ones who, who, you know, have to, to bear the, the, the risk of the spending the money. Uh, but I just, these are, these are just, this is just something that, that is a, as a highly vulnerable area and, uh, something, you know, water is just something we, we couldn't go without. But we could limp by like we are, um, and we could keep going like we are and, and, you know, we could probably make it work. So I'm, I'm not saying it's, it's, I'm not trying to sell you on the project. We could, we could go either direction. This just, just takes a lot of risk away.
But we can get a generator with this, correct?
The generator will be working, functioning. We have a generator there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and what we have to basically rewire it all and.
Be nice if that worked.
Yeah. This basi- basically it redoes all the electrical, the piping, a new pump. We're going to coat the floors and the, and the steel that's rusting and the floors that are getting, that are getting worn. We're going to coat those. Uh, the chlorine room is not, doesn't meet state standards, so we have to redo the chlorine room. Uh, that's what this is doing. So, I mean, it, it's essentially redoing the well house. With the exception of the concrete structure.
And Chris, you'd feel comfortable with the balance that we'd have left in that emergency fund? We'll still be okay? Because you, you kind of, I've been watching your body language a little bit, so I just want to make sure that that's going to be okay.
I'm, I'm frustrated we're redoing the whole wellhouse. I'll just tell you that right now. I'm frustrated we're spending all this money right now. Um, I'm very glad we have, uh, Ted. He's taken the bull by the horns and figured out what needs to be done. So we have a secure water source for the residents that within hills, especially at this time of the year when it's the most dangerous. Um, drop, I, I wasn't, you know, in America in Texas, I wasn't a couple of days ago feeling to drain this account. But looking at if we can get that road in now, looking what's coming up, looking how much oil prices and steel and everything keeps going up and up and up. We're going to lose money if we don't do it now. More so than we're spending right now.
Are you including the road in that statement?
Yes.
Oh, so your recommendation, okay, that's, that's kind of a departure from where I thought we were, but, uh, I, I think it's a fair point. We could sure plow easier or keep the road clear. I mean, it still may not get finished, but at least it's, uh, in, in the pipeline. Ted, do you, do you share that sentiment?
Um.
I mean, in an ideal world, uh, if, 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 if the, the money, uh, stars align.
Yeah, let me, let me word it this way. If something happens to that well during the winter, um, right now, the only access we have a way to get to that well in the winter is to put the tracks on the four wheeler and get to the well. That's how we do it right now. If something were to go wrong with that well during the winter, we would probably spend a good day or two just clearing a path to get to the, what, get utility trucks up there to fix it. Um, because we really couldn't snow blow it that well. Um, but it, it's, um, it, it would be great, but you know, I'll leave that, leave that up to you guys. It, it just, just eliminate some of that, that risk that we have with, with the well up there. Um, but, you know, we'll, we'll make whatever work. I mean, it, it is, it is a lot of money. The, the only thing I might add, Chris, I was thinking about this the other night, is we've still got a, um, grant application with Burgess Owens office that has not been announced yet. And if we were to get that, I think we have some matching dollars there.
Can we use the ARPA money for this? Can we use that 200,000 dollars?
So, and I think we have to use that by the end of the year. So, yeah, yeah, the plan was to use that up as quick as we could.
Chris, how much do we have in that ARPA fund left though? Because I thought we spent some of it already.
Check here.
But it was supposed to go to upgrade the wellhouse for the three-phase power. And that isn't this.
Yeah, so that's to keep in mind too. There's another, I think it's almost 80,000 dollars, 70, 77,000 dollars that, uh, we have to pay S E S D. Um, to finish up the three-phase power to the well. And I think part of the plan was to use part of that ARPA money to pay S S D, S, S E S D for that power. But we'd still have some ARPA money left over after paying them to go towards this.
Yeah, because the S E S D bill was about 80 grand, so it's a 200,000 dollar grant?
190. Yeah. So that, plus we've also asked, um, people up there that have equipment to participate, don't know if they're going to, but we have invited them to participate and help recover the cost of the road portion of it. Um, we'll see if we get any money out of them.
Crossed on that one.
We already bought the V F D, so that came out of the ARPA funds, it's my understanding. Is that right, Ted?
Um, I'm not sure. That was, I know there's V F D up there. I'm not sure how it was bought.
There was one downstairs that was delivered about the beginning of November last year. Beginning of December.
Yeah, yeah. So we've got the V F Ds, we got a V F D up at the wellhouse and then we've got the harmonic filter sitting down in the public workshop. So we've got both of those here. I don't know how they ever paid for it, but we got them here.
Well, those, what does have come from E C T sales and service?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Of 7,500 dollars. So it looks like we've spent, that's a good question, Jody. It looks like we spent about, only about eight grand of that money so far. Um, so we have about 180,000 left of that roughly. Uh, so that, that actually, I had not taken that consideration that that could be spent on this project. So now I'm definitely, yes, we had to consider doing the road. That's 180,000 less we got to take out of savings. And it's, it's a little bit fun.
Okay, uh, I, I, I can't, I forget your name. I know you're Jones in the mill, right? McLean, okay, welcome.
Ted, just a question on the, on the bid tab. 15 square yards of asphalt removal. Do you know, do you know why that unit price would be 3100 dollars a square yard?
Hmm, I don't.
Because that's, that's 50,000 dollars to remove 15 square yards of asphalt.
Yeah. And, and that's one of the items we're going to talk to him about when we meet with him. It's, it's one of those that I don't know what they've included in that. Um, you know, we, we, we put the line item in to remove the asphalt, but have they got other things that they tucked away in that cost? And that's one of the items we want to negotiate with them. But we can't, we can't really, I mean, I can't sit down, negotiate until they know if they're going to get the project or not.
Okay, any other?
Ted, on, so you said that there was a, an error in one of the calculations. Is that one of these two contracts? Do we only? Question here?
It was for the bid, uh, the other contractor that we did not recommend. It was originally the low. He doubled up on one cost and it actually changed his price from um, 700 something thousand on the wellhouse to 900 something thousand. So he actually was the high bidder for the overall project. So we, this, so we, essentially he was no longer the low bidder.
So you're proposing we use number two?
Yeah.
Warner.
Right, Warner. It was the other one Got Dirt that had an error in their bid. They were, when we opened the bids, they originally, that they were lower. But when we went back and added up all their numbers, found they, we found a significant math error by the tune of about 270,000 dollars. So they were no longer the low once we added up their numbers.
Okay. So Warner is the lower at basically 1.005?
Yes.
Okay, any other comments? Yeah, it is.
Well, I think.
But can you put a price on water? I mean, you can, but we do, but.
So Ted, just to make sure, I think there's a few aspects here that I think maybe makes sense. You know, that we could possibly toss out for the sake of now. Um, you know, like the very, on the roadside, you know, steel bollards, you know, double six foot wide decorative gate and steel bollards. Um, you know, things of those natures. Is that for bottom of the road or is that for the wellhouse gate itself or?
That's so, that's the bottom of the road because once we paved that road, the concern from the residents or that this became a very attractive access, they already get people to go up to that flat spot up there, a lot of teenagers at night. Being paved, is it going to be more attractive? So we told them we put some gates across the bottom. The bollard is to constrict the, uh, to allow A T Vs through.
So back to the 50 inch?
Yeah.
So.
Pedestrian.
Do you want me to send a check for that portion so I don't get all those phone calls?
Sure, yeah.
That'd be great. So there's, there is a negotiation element of this bid post acceptance, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we've talked to him already about a few items. He actually called me the contractor. And he said, well, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll give you the information he gave me. So you got all the information your fingers get. He actually emailed me the night after the bid opening and he said, my electrical maiden found out he, when they submitted their price for the electrical improvements, he couldn't get an itemized bid put together quick enough because if you've been up there and seen the electrical, uh, what is just overwhelming. And so they threw in a budget number. He emailed me the other night and said he's now being able to put together and itemize a list and that the price is lower. But we can't, we can't, we can't negotiate his bid and then award it to him. We have to award it as he is and then negotiate after.
Okay, so it could go down.
Could, and likely will, because we're going to reduce some pipe size as well by change order. Um, so that will take us a little bit lower price. I mean, I, I, I don't have any idea how much right now. We're going to talk to him about that item McLean mentioned because we saw that as well, why that's so high. And if so, do we find a way to change that design so we can bring that price down a lot? So we're, we're, we're not done negotiating these, uh, well, I'm gonna say, there are some ways we can go back if, if we award them the project and, and I think work with them to change some items to bring the cost down possibly, but I don't know what that is right now.
I make a suggestion too, that during some of this, there may be an advantage to bringing our financial committee into the process to help and do some analysis, maybe work with Ted on that, but there's a resource there that may be available to help.
Okay, no, thank you.
And they do, they do like to be part of the process. We need to include them.
It, it's a very expensive project, but there is a lot of work to be done. Um, I don't think it's out of the realm of what it would normally, you know, if we were to put this out to bid a second time right now, I, I don't think the prices would change by much. Um, just getting the two bids we did, they were fairly close, so.
Tells me, I, I, I hope that the suggestion is not to go back to the beginning of the bidding process, just as we now move forward after we accept a bid to see if we can utilize them.
I guess for me, it would be if we awarded the both aspects of this project, I would love some, I, I don't know if you can get a, a congra- a contractual, you know, agreement, but that the road would be done prior to, you know, November. I'd hate to award them this and then end up having to do it next summer or next spring or summer.
Or 30,000 dollars more.
What's that, Chris?
30,000 dollars more.
Yeah, well, or it just, we might have been able to find somebody that was a little just cheaper because like Ted said, we're, we're going through a contractor on this instead of say going straight to Echols or, you know, any other paving company and maybe be able to save. I think the, the value for us is that road being in pre-snow.
Yeah, I, I agree. I mean, it, so when we award this, is there a way that we could make it? Because I, I don't even, Christie, your point about the cost of asphalt going up, even if we accept a bid in total, I mean, it's not like they're going to eat the cost if the materials go up in price, right? I mean, we'll still have to absorb that.
They have to on this. So if whatever, whatever bid they submitted us is their locked in price, once we do it.
Okay.
For them. So they, they couldn't change their price even if they waited till spring to do it. Um, if we lock this bid in. Now, ultimately, you know, I mean, just speaking from the, the construction perspective, I mean, we can work with them to try and get the road in by November. Like I said, ultimately, we gave them that option, but told them if they don't, they're going to be more responsible to keep that path clear as needed for them to be able to access the site. Um, there is advantage for us to having it done. Right now, the contract says they have to have the road done before spring and turn the project over to us. We don't have a deadline of November for the road. And really that's because, um, at the time of awarding the project right now, it's all going to be based on material availability. It's, 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 if it's available, I'm sure they'll jump on as quick as they can get on it, if they can get the asphalt.
Hey.
But there's no, I, I, right now, Ben, I can't say we can guarantee them to have it done. It's.
Oh, you can just, you know, even just leaning on them.
Yeah, yeah, maybe that's a better way. We can, we can certainly have that discussion with them and try and push in that direction as much as we can. But I'm, I'm not sure there's any guarantee that we could get from them.
Yeah, I just think if, if, if we didn't know of what that timeline looked like, we could potentially save money by going to a different avenue potentially for asphalt. But there is an element of speed here that's, you know, in my consideration. Um, because we can also lock in a price for the spring with a company now. It probably would be cheaper. So that's my consideration there is that velocity as value. If we end up not getting that velocity, we ended up spending more of our residents' money. Um, potentially out of, uh, poorly. We, we need to be better fiscally responsible then. But if they're getting it done, then I'd be more okay with that.
Uh, good point. Jody?
Um, what standard are, I mean? What standard are, I mean, I understand where we need to do roads to a certain standard, but this is not a heavily traffic road. And to what standard did we bid it at? Could we have bid it at a little lower? Could our, RFP included a little lower standard or are we doing this road that's not heavily traveled? That's not going to see, you know, a ton of traffic at the same standard. Say we're having West Lofer done or, uh, we're going to have, uh, the road for the Bell subdivision come up or South Lofer. Are we doing it to that standard? Cause we maybe can decrease our standard a little bit where it's a glorified private driveway.
Yeah, it's dust suppression.
And, and I, I, I mean, that one is, so we did, if I remember right, it's a three over six. Um, which is not, I mean, that's, I don't know, McLean can speak better than that because he's a pavement expert. That's kind of like a parking lot type paving. I don't know that it's a heavy, heavy loaded traffic paving section. It's more of a mediocre, I would say.
I would say that as well. Oh, please.
Hey, McLean, can you, can you speak closer to the mic?
Uh, can you hear me better?
There you go. Yep.
So one recommendation that I would have is to, to be careful that you're, I would almost prefer to not pave it before the project's complete because those contractors are going to damage that asphalt as they drive on it. So I would recommend not paving it until next spring. Get the grading done, build the road, make it nice for them to drive on. And then once they're, once they're done with the project and they moved out, they can just hire the paver to come in next spring and get it paved. Um, otherwise you could potentially end up having a, a patch that nobody wants.
All right. So, uh, coming back to you, Chris, then does that change in your mind the value of locking in the road at this point?
Um, well, they can always bail, right? They don't have to finish the project or they don't even have to start the project and then we're just back at square one again, going back to billions and things. I think there's a value, I, I, I get what the engineer is saying, but let's make them go up the road by the, uh, it's a little steeper, but let's make them go up the other side and hit the asphalt road and damage that.
I don't know if that's- But I, I just got the, so you were saying that you feel that there's value in, in urgency in terms of locking this in. So in light of the discussion that we've had, do you still maintain that position? Uh, or? I mean, so it, it, it sounds like it might even be to our advantage to, to not get it done this year. So that would have been one key potential advantage to including it in what we award tonight. So if that's not even really an advantage, then the other piece of it would be the cost of the materials, but it sounds as though we can lock those in whether we use this bid or, or just somebody else. So.
Right, but we saw the, the, the vendor builder still, they don't get it started this year and we come back in March and everything's gone up fifteen percent and they can't do it. There's nothing, it says they have to complete this project. So then we're stuck doing it again. And now we've got the fifteen percent or twenty percent rate increase.
So I'll give you, I'll give you maybe some pros and cons on this real quickly. Um, the, the, like McLean said, the, the, one of the advantages of not paving this year is it'll get less damage during construction. And, um, we won't have to worry about as much damage. The, the con is, is if, if they complete this by December, we know our heaviest snow years are January, February, March. We're going to be up there trying to keep this, you know, access this well with our, um, four wheeler and, um, tracks it, you know? Whereas if they get it paved now, we can snow blow it during those months, um, with our, with our blower. So there's pros and cons either way. Um, maybe it's, we see if we can work with them and say, put down two inches of the asphalt right now. So it gives us the ability to keep that road clear over the winter. Cause if they, if they finish the project by the end of December, they're probably done before our heaviest snow comes. And, and then we'll have a, a nice paved access, you know, during the heavy snow months. Um, if, if they're not going to be able to do that, maybe a thought is we put down half the asphalt now. So we have a way to keep it clear and accessible and then have them come back in spring and put down the other half of the asphalt to give us a nice finished surface. See if they'd be willing to do that.
Ted, do you have a, a rough idea, like a rough order of magnitude of, of the kind of savings you would, would expect if we went out direct on quotes next year, you know, to be done next year?
Uh, I, I don't, um, the two bids we got for this road, uh, this one was just over three. But I think they've kind of got a number in there that we can bring down a bit. Um, I don't know if it was a calculation error on their part or what, but, and then the other one was around two fifty. Um, so if we went directly to an Echols or a Staker, whoever, uh, you know, there probably could be a little more savings there, but I, right now I don't have an answer to if or how much that would be.
I just wonder if it would combat inflation, um, of, of, of the raws, right?
Yeah, and, and, and that's a good point. If we decide to wait till next year and then put it, you know, have someone else come in and do it next year. I mean, right now we've got a contractor with a lock price regardless of when he does it. Right? He has to do it for the price he's given us. Um, if we wait till next year and go with a different contractor, you know, the inflation between now and then, and also doing a project in the spring when they're, they're getting their busiest season going, could inflate that price to discount the savings of maybe going directly with a paving contractor. It's, it's just hard to say right now. It's all kind of a guess.
So you, you, it, it's too close for you to even make a call, uh, an educated guess on that?
All right.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, I, could I make a couple of comments on this? I know I've kind of been listening to it. Uh, is that, am I allowed to do that?
Yeah, please do.
Okay, so, uh, you know, the conversation, if I may, started out with, you know, the, the chances of getting the road done this year were pretty, uh, scarce at best. Uh, so it will look like it was going to go into it next year anyway. Uh, but the one thing that hasn't been discussed is when we started looking at this project, uh, over a year ago, you know, using the, uh, ARPA money to try and get it done was to get the three-phase power up there. Now that's a separate component to the whole process, uh, by SESD. Now I don't know if this bid includes getting the conduit, finishing the conduit so that SESD can complete the project, but I think one priority that must be done because we've been so at risk on that is the single-phase power. We really need to get that three-phase power up there as quick as we can. I, I think that that's been overlooked in the discussion. I just wanted to bring that up and, uh, I kind of want to go ahead with what Brian was saying. He says, you know, we've got a general contractor who is subbing out the, the road project that probably isn't going to get done this year anyway. And how much working on that road is going to disrupt trying to get the pump work done? Uh, that's a question I can't answer, but I just wondering, you know, if that needs to be brought into the conversation. And if we were to go ahead and, you know, pull that project out or that part of the uh, bid out, yeah, part that, excuse me, that piece out of the bid and go and look at a, a separate contract next year. I, I think there would be some saves because we've eliminated the, uh, general portion. And so we're essentially hiring a subcontractor as a general to do it. So tho- those are some thoughts I had, but again, I just wanted to highlight that we seem to be, uh, overlooking, or at least from my perspective, getting that three-phase, which is what this whole thing started out to be up there as quick as we can. That, that needs to be a priority and that's what we wanted to use the ARPA money for by the end of the, uh, exploration date on it.
Thanks, Mark. And, and I don't think there's any disagreement on that. And I, I, I believe that, uh, the three-phase power is, is certainly, I mean, it's not part of this bid, but it's certainly part of the overall, uh, anticipated process.
Yeah. So this, this bid included the contractor finishing the conduit and setting the transformer pad and removing the old transformer. Then SESD resets the new transformer, the switchgear. And that's part of their price. They provide that. So, so in, in effect, between SESD's contract and this contract is to, it will finish the three-phase power.
Okay. So I think that's good input. Counsel, do you have what you feel you need to make a decision? And I mean a really good decision. Don't, don't blow it, Ben.
It's a big decision.
Yep.
It's a lot.
That's, that's where you get paid the big bucks to make these kind of decisions. I'll just, I'll just present it.
Also on that, I'm going to put Ted on the spot. He is the professional public works director, professional engineer. Uh, you know, I, I really think he ought to give you a one way or the other opinion, not that you could go either way. Ted, I'm sorry to put you on the spot like that, but that's why they pay you the medium sized bucks.
Yeah, well, that's why I said the council gets paid the big bucks. They get to make the decision on the money's part of it. I'm, I, uh, so I'll, I'll, I'll word it maybe the way I, I worded it in an email. I think the well is pretty critical. That's critical infrastructure and we've got to have a reliable water system with backup generation. Um, it would be nice to have the road. Um, it, it's a gamble on whether we would get it cheaper or not if we waited. That I don't know. We could make it work without the road, just like we have for however many years we've had that well. Um, we could make it work and, and then do something later down the road. Um, it's a nice feature to have. It's, it's probably not going to get a whole lot less, but I don't know until I, till we had, you know, the chance maybe to talk directly with the paving contractor. Um, so I would say that's the, that's the nice, I, I think I called it the add-on feature to the vehicle when you go buy a vehicle. Uh, and, and, you know, they want to sell you the undercoating. That's what the road is.
Can I ask a question and not, I don't want it to sound rude or critical, but, um, is it, is it because you don't like the way it was done before or is it really actually faulty? I guess is what I, you know, how it was constructed. And I, we know who did it before and I know things were done differently, but I guess I'm asking, is it just because it wasn't done maybe the way you would have done it or the way up to code? Or is it really, really that bad that it's got to all be redone? I, do you see what I'm asking?
Yeah, fair question.
Without, I'm, I'm not saying that you like it your way better. That's not how, what I'm trying to ask. I'm just saying, you know, is it because the way Corbett did it was so inferior and it's, it's at risk or is it? You know, I guess that's my question.
So I'll, I'll answer that in a two-part answer. Um, and it's a little more complicated than saying, you know, no, I, I want my way or, 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 so we've, we, about in two thousand nineteen, a new pump was bought that pumps more water out of the well. Right? And this is sitting at the well right now. It's never been installed. The plan was once we had three-phase power there to install this new pump. So part of this cost is to pull out the old pump and put the new pump in that we bought five years ago and have the three-phase power hooked up. So that's really just a, a completion of just what hasn't been done yet that was always planned. Now with that though, what I, I, I don't know that was anticipated at the time when this pump was bought was increasing the flow makes the pipe just there too small. In other words, the velocity gets too high and it ruins the equipment too fast. So we have to put bigger pipe in now with the bigger pump to bring the velocities down. So we don't wear our equipment out. So I don't know that was anticipated before and that's just um, good operational practice and engineering guidelines. Um, so we have to replace the pipe and put a bigger diameter pipe in so our velocities don't get too high. So those are kind of the items that are just a continuation of what hadn't been done yet that was always planned. Now the, uh, the, the second part of that is, and, and I, I, I don't mean to make this sound like it's going to sound because I think Corbett did a lot of, a lot of really good things and he's a smart guy and I like Corbett. Um, I took one, a couple of our residents up there, including one that has been an electrician for forty years. And he looked at all the wiring in there and he spent a good hour up there with me. And he walked out and he said, that's going to have to be all replaced. Um, it's, it's just doesn't meet the sizing requirements, the code requirements that it needs to meet. Um, and I don't know why or what was behind it. And so, and then the, the other part of that is the generator, uh, was not, uh, ever connected, nor does it have the fuel system to feed it. So, and it's, and once again, that's just stuff that wasn't completed. So this gets our generator hooked up with the correct wiring and it gets the diesel fuel tank, we'll call it with pump that feeds the generator installed. So these are all things that are just kind of left undone. The electrical kind of has to be redone. And the chlorine room that was originally built doesn't meet the state code. So it has to be modified to be, meet the state standards. So that's being redone. So I guess the, the quick answer is no, it's not really because I want it this way. It's to finish the project and then bring things up to code. Now there are a couple of things that are just make it nice in the building. For example, coating the floor preserves the floor, but do we really need it? Probably not, but it's not a huge item. Uh, coating the steel, there's some steel I-beams and some steel posts that are kind of rusting. And so this will get those coated and make it nice. So we can preserve those. Do we need it? Yeah, probably could wait on that, but it's, they're low hanging fruit, low dollar items. That it just makes it nice and preserves the building longer.
Okay. And I didn't, yeah, I just didn't want you to be insulted by my question, but I was just-
You can't insult me. I'm, 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 I'm not.
Well, I do remember-
To be insulted. I don't even know when I'm being insulted.
I do remember when we went through and you made a comment to Corbett. I was standing there when you made a comment to him about the, I think about the chlorine mixer and that it was, you know, you'd never seen it done that way before. That was the comment that was made. I do remember that actually. So.
Yeah, and some of it is to get our, we don't have, not the entirety of the system can be hooked up to our skater right now, the way it's built. Um, so we're putting in equipment that will hook more up to our skater, which right now we have to make three trips a week to the well to take readings. When all of that can be done on a computer, if we just hook it up right and get the right equipment in. So that's what part of this does. It is replacing a little bit of the equipment that is functional right now. But it just creates more work for us where if we put the right equipment in it, it saves a lot of time and in the end that means probably a lot more money.
Yeah, and I, I just, that it's something that we can't, uh, I mean, our skeleton crew is stretched very thin. So something like that I think is really important. And I think, I, I view, I mean, code is something that it's like, that's a totally objective standard that we have no excuse to not meet. So if, if.
Right. I just want to ask the question. So when people ask me, I have the answers.
Yeah.
So I, I can attest to, uh, their code violations that I saw when I was up there testing the motor. Um, there are definitely things done in there as we transfer over from, from uh, single-phase to three-phase, we're, I mean, this is basically ripping everything out based, based on what I'm seeing here is it's pretty much ripping everything out and putting in the new stuff, um, and not, you know, cause as we change over to the, to the new one, new, uh, electrical, that's, that's kind of necessary. I mean, there's, there's some things we can use, but, uh, pretty much, pretty much a full replacement. The one thing that I've got to say, and, and as I think more about this road, um, it scares, it scares the hell out of me putting in new equipment right before winter. Uh, where we, i- if we don't do this road, if we don't have this road available. Um, and, and granted, we might not get it. It might, it just, you know, it might be too late to, to get. But, um, there's, there's a term we use with equipment called infant mortality. Um, and it's when things break down when you first buy them. Uh, there's a huge failure rate at the beginning of, uh, an installation of equipment. And this is what I do for a living. And, and it's considered a bathtub curve where it drops off significantly after that infant mortality period. And then levels out and then as it ages, it spikes back up again. Um, and so not having a better access to that well when we're putting in new equipment scares the ever loving hell out of me.
That's a really valuable perspective. Thank you. Okay, um, anybody have anything else? Okay, let's move on then to B.
All right.
Oh, no, you're right.
Yep. Uh, and I don't know if this is McLean's presentation or if this is something, uh, you're taking Ted, but the engineering for pavement preservation plan?
Yeah, I'll, I'll kind of kick it off and then McLean can chime in. Um, so that's the reason McLean is, is there tonight. So, uh, it, as you recall, we had the pavement preservation plan complete, well, completed, uh, it's in final draft. And as part of that plan outlined projects to start tackling our roads. And, um, so the first project that came from that, and I think we've talked about this in previous meetings, was to do a micro sale project. Um, uh, to preserve, I think about four miles of road. That was completed with the waterline project a while back. Um, what we want to do is get that design going and get that out to bid. Uh, late this uh, well, through the winter, uh, late fall and winter so that we can get a contractor lined up when spring hits to do the project. Uh, because contractors start scheduling their work now for next spring, these micro-sail and paving contractors. So what this is, is the engineering uh consulting fee to design the micro-sail project. And then also provide some support to us during construction. So we'll get that complete and then put it out to bid and this will be a design to put out to bid for. Roughly, I think it's about half million dollars in micro-sail next spring.
Thank you. All right. Anything to add, McLean?
Well, that's, I think I have a contractor I've been working with. Um, Ted, you're gonna have to remind me what road I'm talking about with the people and the.
You're you're really cutting in and out, McLean, but I think it's uh, you're talking about oak where it gets really steep.
The oak's the one that's pretty steep. Um, is it? This one's a, it's like yellow for some reason. Is that better, Ted?
Yes, thanks.
Okay. Um, so I'm gonna have the contractor come look at oak that's pretty steep that has, you can feel little bumps in it. Um, I want to make sure that microsurface is going to not run on that road because of how steep it is. Um, so I will have him come look at that, but the others should be good to go to go ahead and microsurface.
Great, so, thank you. Okay, any uh questions on that? I love that plan. Perfect. Thanks to both of you. Uh, item four, large purchase requests. I think we've already potentially spent a.
The answer's no for everything. Don't you dare, Ted. Don't you even dare.
So maybe I can give you a uh. I'll I'll just maybe report on our large purchase request. Our loader is in and our snow blower, I got word today, is also delivered. So we should be getting those up in the city here before too long.
Okay. Any uh? Comments?
No, I just, I worry about some citizens that have been waiting for their roads to be done for years and years that they're going to be angry at us. I'm very concerned that we're spending this money and doing these things and they're not getting their road fixed. And one of them is actually my boss and he calls me and asks me lots of questions.
I already talked to him. He knows he's not getting Jack.
It'd be a well-written TED Talk.
Yeah, it'll probably be a TED Talk and just tell him it's in the plan. And we're we're doing the uh, we're doing the most economical approach to getting our roads.
And this is all water to that road. It's coming from a whole different budget.
I know. I'm just saying they don't know that, right? And so.
I talked to him for about thirty minutes the other day about his road.
Yeah, he called me too.
Well, I I I would say that uh, what we've got now, though, is we have a plan. I mean, it's unlike before, I think. Where and and not to denigrate the efforts of others, but. I mean, it was just kind of a, well, maybe we'll get around to it, but I mean, now I think that we can have a a really well. Articulated plan and I mean, you know, things will pop up that may shift priorities, but. But now there's at least something in place that says, okay, yeah, well, your number. Whatever on the list. I won't say a number because probably makes somebody mad, but.
Yeah.
I I I I mean, that's that that we work with what we have. I mean, and it it.
Absolutely.
That's a pavement management sort of doctrine is that you you do have to take care of the roads that you can save and those that are unsavable. I mean, you you sometimes just there's, they have to be prioritized differently. Okay, uh. Uh, were there any other large purchase?
Just stay a contact with the Alkazam.
The what?
Alkazam.
Okay, yeah, so we we've talked about the Alkazam contract and then some of these public works matters. Uh, I think that's everything. All right, um, item five A personnel. Um, we we're, we're looking to uh expand our our. Public works uh a little bit, but uh that's still a work in process, so um, that's underway though, but uh. That's all I had to report there. Um, Councilmember Hilliard?
Um, there actually is a county um e- emergency management exercise, um quite extensive going on right now. Um, and so when I get a debrief, I've kind of gotten there as much as I can. Um. But when I get a debrief on exactly what that is, then I'll be able to report on on what was learned there and it. Hopefully is going well, but that's all for me.
Nice, thanks. Okay, uh, Councilmember Hutchings?
Okay, so we've not had a PTR meeting. Um. And public works, we actually skipped uh this last one, but I do want to point out that uh I noticed work being done on uh Lofer. So if you go down that way, you'll start seeing excavation happening and and things like that. Um. And I can't find any notes for planning commission. I don't know that. I thought we'd had a planning commission meeting, but I can't seem to find that. Um, but I don't don't have anything.
Chairman's shaking you off, so uh I don't think there's anything.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Kinnison?
Well, I'm still jumping up and down with joy for the sirens operating. It was very successful.
That was really successful. Um, I just want to comment for the council. Um. These are manual each month. Someone needs to come to this location and set those off. I would propose uh that we train more than just Ted to do this. I I would suggest uh. We get others involved and in other words, I I would submit the names of Michael Myers and Craig Moyer, who have expressed an interest to learn how to set them off. And uh, and they both want to come again to the next month. The good thing is is we can practice this, you know, month after month after month, but if we don't come here to do that, they won't go off, so. Um, I don't know if you want me to, I want to hold a public safety meeting and get a vote from that group about these people and maybe add others. I don't think it hurts to trade several. I think Ben should learn how to do it.
I was thinking you as public safety and me as emergency manager probably makes sense.
One concern is that siren is in a. More secured part of the city center. And it's where we've got our safe and checks and our skater system. And that is not a key that I would be comfortable. Giving out unless we do some. Changing of locks.
Yeah, we need to do something because I don't think you want to come up here every every month.
No, I I'm not saying that, but we would, we would need to do some rekeying of locks and maybe moving. We can't move the skater system, but I mean, maybe we could move the. Safe because that's where we store all our checks and. Other items that.
Yeah, it's tricky. If you would consider how to work that out, I don't have a key even and and you know, all that's appropriate, so we need to work out a way to get in there.
Maybe the three of us for now would work until we figured out a better solution.
Well, and and I mean, it's something that I I I mean, I. It it certainly in terms of that consideration, I mean, we've talked about the security features of this building. For a variety of reasons. I mean, and and I know that we've upgraded some of our locks so that there is. Um. Essentially a log uh for each individual, like people have codes that you know who it is and and. Or and I don't know if would that allay your concern, Jody, or do we need to have higher security clearance for that type of a environment?
Well, keep in mind that currently the key right now that goes into that area. Is the one that gets into all of our offices and the file cabinet room. Where we're storing uh information that. We can't have the public have access to.
But we could potentially put a lock on that room.
We'd have to put a, yeah, we'd have to put a lock on the middle door that leads into there. From this door here, so the hallway door. And then we'd have to put a lock on that door. The only problem is by closing that door. Um, it gets really warm in there. And the equipment heats up. So like the summer, I brought a fan in just to keep going to keep that equipment so it wouldn't. Heat up when we had to close that door. So we've got a ventilation problem in that room. I think it's the appropriate room for the equipment to be in, but. Just some logistics that probably would need to be worked out.
Yeah, no, tho- that those are good points. Um.
I remember.
Oh, go ahead.
Like, I remember the key system in the city center has seven layers that they can have seven different. Layers or each lock can have seven different types of keys to it, so we could do a hard key. The other thing is we could look at going to a key card system. And seeing if that's something that would be a benefit to the citizens. That way, I mean, to the the city, if anybody loses their key, just turn the key card off and not to rekey the building. Um, part of Alkazam's. Presentation is we need to lock the equipment up that's in that room so it does not have access to anybody who shouldn't be in there. Um, and the audit this year, I've been working on the audit. There was a five-page report I had to fill out just specifically on IT and IT security. And that was one of the questions they have is what kind of locks do you have so people can't access? Like the water computer and our our system. So something's gonna have to change in there regardless.
So where is the siren system? Is it in with the safe, right?
So.
And all of our network stuff and the computer for the skater system.
So our central nervous system.
It's our, it is our central nervous system. So. You know, that is a, yeah. Where we're letting some other individuals in there. I I would be a bit, I mean, if it's. Do a council member or um our fire chief or our assistant fire chief. No mayor, no problem, but when we start going to outside citizens. Um, who some of these guys do know how to, you know, have experience in computers. Are we? Opening ourselves up to vulnerable.
I don't, I don't know that I trust our fire chief either, but one other thought is, um. We could um move the uh siren system too. That might be easier than trying to move everything else. Uh, if we.
Yeah, no, I I would, how how big is it?
It's just a little, but.
Console.
Wires. It's got some wires and it hooks to stuff, you know.
Well, actually, I take it back. Um. Yes, we could. We just have, because there's a, it it's wired from the antenna into that room to the console. From the antenna outside, so we'd have to do some rewiring up in the attic, but it's possible.
In my dreams, it would be covered by its own key because not everybody should set the sirens off.
Yeah, because I guess that's true. The security in the other direction is a consideration too.
Mayor in there just pushing buttons.
Well, and I uh.
Unless there's an emergency.
And it's driving down the road.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's legitimate. I think that's a.
That's helping safety.
Yeah. There's there's a real public safety risk there. All right. Well, it sounds like it needs to be fleshed out a little bit, but uh something worthy of consideration.
I would like to continue training people that are interested just to have those people in the. You know, as they're they're locked out. That's fine with me, but at some point we'll have some worked out.
Yeah, no, and that way you can still be moving that forward, but yeah, we are mindful of security.
There's another issue. Voice is critical. To that system and not everybody has a voice that can be understood through that system. So to have people just, I want to do it, I want to do it, doesn't cut it. There needs to be some review and maybe a little testing or whatever. Uh, as to who has the voice that would work where it's understood.
That's a great point, and we only learn that through once a month testing.
Yeah.
You know, you're right. Um.
Well, I was thinking maybe someone's best James Earl Jones or something. May he rest in peace.
And we did actually learn a lot this last time, just in the way it works a little differently than our other one, because before. You had to hold the mic really close to your mouth, speak slow and clear. Uh, the first time I did it on this one, that's what I did and it was all garble. Uh, so on this one, we actually had to back the mic away from your mouth and then just talk a little louder. And and so there's going to be some trial and error, I think, for a little while, trying to figure out just how this. The sensitivity of the mic because it's it's a little different than what we had before.
No, I think that's a great suggestion. They'll get get people trained on it, get some real radio voices uh volunteering and. Maybe we can have them read stories over it.
Well, you got twenty seconds.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Doral. Uh, Councilmember Lunt?
Ah, you sure you want to turn it over to me for a sec?
Well, I don't know. What are you gonna say?
No, just, it's Woodland Hills days this week. A lot of people have gone to a lot of work, so I hope everyone will be there um to support. And remember, you all have to be in the parade. And you have to bring candy and throw it and you have to decorate something. So get on a motorcycle, you're side by side, whatever you want. But be ready to go. Don't jump in with somebody else because you didn't prepare.
That seemed pointed.
It usually is.
So um. Don't forget that. I have T-shirts for all of you. I will get them to you. They weren't ready yet, so um they're supposed to be ready tomorrow. But yeah, it should be good. Um, we did have. We want to bring up the problem now or no?
Oh, uh, well, I mean, it's it's something that and and Chris, you were gonna uh talk about the legal particularities of it. I mean, with the race, so I. I I think that, yeah, I mean, let's.
So, yeah, we did have a little controversy. Um. And something we're kind of stuck with this year, but we do need to, we do need to talk about it so it's on public record, I think. So I'll let Chris go.
Yeah, it um, we have some outside folks collecting the money for. The race that are not tied to the city and they're using methods that are not approved. Via the Utah Money Management Council Act that we have to follow when receiving and monies and where monies are held housed and held. Um, we. Just want to bring it up from the public meeting. Uh, we don't, we don't suspect any fraud. We don't suspect anything nefarious. It's just not done the way that it needs to be done. This will be the last year it's done that way. We're repenting and just want to make sure the council knows once again, nothing nefarious is going on that we have seen. Um, but just wanted to bring it up.
So we're doing the reset and uh.
And we were unaware and to be fair, when I asked last year, the money that came in only covered. The prizes and the costs. That's what I was told. So. We didn't realize that they were trying to do this as a money-making venture, but we've since found out from her own admission that. That is her goal is to make money off of the event.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, anything else?
Um, no, just if we've forgotten anything. Oh, I do have, I think I did have one. I did have one question. You were gonna do your little thing. Do you know when that was gonna be the recognition thing?
I thought it was at the breakfast. Is that when you're and you're recognizing all volunteers, right?
Yep.
It died just.
You're good.
I didn't want to tell people their presents before Christmas, but.
Um, and then the committee was wondering about. Because we'll have a main sound system up at the park, but does this, doesn't the city have a little one that we can use for here? Or do we need to get Rick Prey?
That one died.
Okay.
So I do have someone who has a nice little mixer board and some um speakers. That happens to be sitting to the left of you.
To the right.
To the right, sorry. I'm looking at you and thinking differently. Who's been really great at setting that up for us for.
Let me know where.
Our town hall meetings and things like that. Um, you might be able to twist his arm.
I think I just did.
Yeah, it looks like it's all settled.
I get to ride in the Jeep, though.
Okay, fine. I'm gonna have my husband take the top and doors off, hopefully.
No, I'll bring something.
Day or two. My dog's gonna be in there too, though. She bites. Just, where's where's Garrett?
Sounds fun.
It wasn't this dog. One of my dogs bit one of my neighbors recently. I had to call him and turn myself in. That was fun. Anyway, okay, so that's all I've got.
All right, thank you. Um, item six, possible items for upcoming city council meetings. This is not really under that, but. Um, I did hear that it's further to our discussion with Three Bridges. So Larry did reach out to me and said that he, you know, in light of the discussion, he wants to take it to the next level. I proposed that city staff. We get together with him, we make some recommendations. Ben will be there as a council liaison. And then we would report with those recommendations to the council. I just think that it would be more effective to do it that way than to. Do it by large committee, so we'll take into account the public works efforts and I mean, if. You have, I mean, it's it. It's certainly something where we want everyone's input, but we've just got to approach it a little bit carefully in the sense that. We've got the the public work side of it, the law enforcement side of it, so. Essentially, the money side of it, essentially, everybody from the city staff, we're meeting with him tomorrow. And then from there, and I don't know which. And then from there, and I don't know which direction it will go, but that would be then something that we would report to the council and say, okay, this is where we kinda landed and
I just wanna, I just wanna throw something, I'll give something to Ben though, off, offline.
Okay.
Okay.
That I'd like to say.
Okay.
Don't take your time.
Okay, so anyway, uh, if, if uh, that sounds reasonable. If you have uh, any comments, I'm certainly open to them, but.
As long as we get to come back and put it in a public forum before we make any votes.
Yeah, no, and, and I agree, that, it's, this is more intended to make the process efficient so that it's not, I, I mean, so that we can kinda focus it in, but if you wanna take it any particular direction, that's your prerogative.
No, I think, um, and I know that it's not always easy, but if, if you could get us like after the meeting, maybe get us a synopsis or I, because I think it would be good to have an opportunity to go and talk to some of the citizens and just say, hey, this is what's been proposed and just gets more of their input. I know we, we do that anyway, but.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a great suggestion, so.
Where it's kind, such a hot topic, I'd like to make sure that I have a chance to talk to people about it.
Right, no, and, and I agree, I mean, and, and the last thing I wanna do is have it look like it's any degree of secrecy, because that's not the intent. It's, it's about efficiency. You guys can put the brakes on any aspect of it that you see need to be slowed, so.
No, and I think that's great. I'm just saying if we can get like notes from the meeting and kinda know what direction we're going, that would be helpful.
Yep, I think that's a good idea. Okay. Any other proposed upcoming council meetings? All right, uh, then let's take our break and reconvene at uh, I guess uh,
We just leave like five, yeah.
Seven forty, yeah.
Hey, check in on the debate. Who's winning?
Right, no. Okay, uh, let's uh, call this meeting to order. Councilmember Kinnison, would you lead us in prayer? And Councilmember Hilliard, will you lead us in the pledge?
Yeah. Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful this evening to meet as a city council. We are grateful for the relationships of of our leaders of the city, and we're grateful for the opportunity we have to serve our citizens. We ask you to bless us to make decisions that are long-lasting and, and important to our city. We pray for thy assistance in, in helping us think of all of the things that will make our city run smoother and better and in a financial meaningful way. We are thankful for those in our city, all the volunteers and all those that we appreciate and bless those that are in need of anything at this time that they might have thy blessings with them. We're grateful for the opportunity we have to work together and we ask thy spirit to be with us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Mr. Rice?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Item ten, public comment. I would like to publicly apologize for saying in public that my wife doesn't go to Sunday school.
Yeah.
That's my public comment. And public penance. All right.
You just have to serve that later, brother.
Right, well, this was it. Okay, uh, anybody online, uh, have any public comment to make? Okay, then we'll close the public comment portion and item eleven, approval of August twenty seven, twenty twenty four, city council meeting minutes.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lunt.
Second.
Go ahead, man.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Hilliard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Uh, item twelve, approval of funds for computer tech security support.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hilliard.
I'm assuming this is for one year, or is that what we're deciding right now?
This is giving us the thumbs up.
I'll second that.
Okay.
And they do have draw our support.
Oh, excellent, okay.
Okay.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison. Um, this is just a regular vote, right, Jody? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Approval, item thirteen, approval to award bid for improvements to the Broad Hallow Well.
It's a hard one.
I move that we approve the bid with the road option for the Broad Hallow Well.
Okay, so the, 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 you accept the bid, or we accept the bid in its entirety, including the road? Am I restating that correctly?
That is, that is correct.
Okay, and, and that would be the recommended option two, right, or the, 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 the second bid?
The second bid, yeah.
Okay.
Warner, right.
Got that, Jody? Okay, so that's a motion by Councilmember Hutchings.
And I'll second his motion.
Okay, a second by Councilmember Kinnison. Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yeah, yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, item fourteen, approval to proceed with the engineering for the pavement preservation plan.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
A motion by Councilmember Hilliard?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Lunt. Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Resolution, item fifteen, resolution twenty twenty four dash twenty seven, amending the city fee schedule.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Lunt?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Carries, item sixteen. Um, ordinance twenty twenty four dash twenty four.
Can we talk about that one?
Yeah.
Last city council meeting, when I presented it to you guys, that we would be putting this forward to you about the written meeting minutes.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to remind her what it was.
Yeah, no, I'm okay.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, a motion by Councilmember Hilliard?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilmember Kinnison. Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Lunt?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Kinnison?
Yes.
Councilmember Hutchings?
Yes.
Okay, that motion carries. Um, so the approval of large purchase requests, we already talked about the computer support. I believe that was all of them. So I don't think that we need anything there. Um, closed session. No updates, so uh, I mean, we're proceeding, but no updates.
So nothing happened today?
There is an update.
Oh, there is an update, well.
They submitted the um, motion to dismiss.
Oh, oh, that's right.
Dismisses the uh, brief.
Yeah.
So they met their deadline.
They met their deadline and it was submitted today. And we'll just wait.
That, that was our brief, right?
Our brief, yeah.
Yeah, so the, the few just had already submitted. I mean, they, they've done everything they needed to timely. Our brief was due today, and so.
It was our response.
Or yeah, our response, our responsive brief.
I knew something was happening today.
Yeah.
That's it.
Okay, thank you. Um, but that again is a public record. We won't talk strategy, but that, that did happen. There is that update, so. Uh, unless anybody else wants to go into closed meeting to discuss anything else, then we'll move on. Okay, motion to adjourn if we can get it.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Kinnison.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmembers Lunt, Councilmember Lunt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Okay, thanks, everybody online. See you later.